Okay.
It wasn't until I'd learned to be silent that they were waiting for it. They were keeping it a secret. It was weird.
Okay. My name's Joan Woodard and I'm your hearing examiner for this evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are before, that are pending. I make my recommendation only to the county commissioners. I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The applications will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back. And when you come to the podium, please give your name and address for the record before you begin your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will then get into the public comment sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed, and then we'll see if we have anybody on me, uh, internet, whatever.
No.
Right. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or their representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no more testimony. The time limits are 30 minutes for the applicant's presentation, three minutes for public testimony, and 15 minutes for applicant rebuttal. I ask you that you ask that you please hold your remarks to the three minutes. I grew up with a mother who is very rigorous about not interrupting people, and it's very hard for me to say, "Your time is up." So, please follow those rules. I would ask that you direct all of your testimony to me and not to the audience. Are there any questions regarding this evening's proceedings? Not seeing any, we will begin this evening with case number APP 24-0001.
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. Blake Zetter, planner with Community Development, here to present APP 24-0001, Appeal of Administrative Decision by the Director. Since this is appeal, the following order will take place for the presentation and the hearing itself. I will introduce the appeal. I will then step back and let the appellant present their case in chief, along with any testimony or evidence in support of the appellant. I will then step, oop, step back in and make the county's case in chief, along with any testimony or evidence in support of the county, along with the appelleant's rebuttal. The subject property where the appeal is taking place is located east of Quarter Lane in Cougar Gulch. The subject property here is outlined in red and gains access here off Clementson Woods, along with a additional road up here, which I will zoom in. So as you can see, the property gained access, as I said, from Clementson Road, as well as Reynolds Road, running north to south. The subject property is currently developed with an access from Reynolds Road. The property itself is zoned agriculture suburban, which has a minimum lot size of two acres. The surrounding area in orange is zoned rural, which has a minimum lot size of five As a part of the subdivision request, the applicant proposed a three-lot minor subdivision, all of which, all three parcels proposed exceeded the two-acre minimum of the agriculture zone. Lot three, which is currently developed, would retain its access off Reynolds Road. Lots one and two down here would gain access off a common driveway from Clementson Woods. Regarding the course of proceedings, on November 1st, Community Development Director signed the Order of Decision approving the minor subdivision. On November 27th, Community Development did receive a notice of appeal from the appellant, Don Mosher, which falls within the timeframe for the appeal. The first hearing was held on April 15th, in which Community Development received an analysis that was entered into the record at that hearing. Staff did not have time to review that analysis, and so it was remanded back to this hearing Regarding public comment on the appeal, for the first public hearing on April 17th, we did receive three public comments in support of the appeal. For this hearing on August 7th, Community Development received four public comments in support of the appeal. And that is the introduction for the appeal itself. I stand for any questions before stepping back and letting the appellant make their case in chief.
Did you notice whether the four that responded this time were the same as the initial three plus one?
I believe so, correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Em, I'm sorry. One last thing. We did receive an analysis from the applicant of the subdivision itself, and I'd like to enter that into the record.
Okay. Read into the record is HE 1000.
And with no further questions, I will let the appellant make their case in chief.
Hello.
Hello again. Scott Porman for the appellant's 320 East Snyder, Suite 204, Quarter Lane. I trust you've had a chance since our last hearing to digest not just the presentation I made last time, but also the brief that was accompanied that and the documents that were attached to that. Okay, I figured as much, but I did want to confirm. I'm gonna start where Mr. Braden ended, with his amended letter. Oh, what'd I do?
He's trying to reiterate.
Yeah. Well, back to yours. Oh, you got it, okay. Yeah, that'll work, that's fine, thank you. If you've seen Mr. Braden's amended letter, he has a conclusion in there that essentially supports the director's decision here. And he says essentially that the declaration of covenants, road maintenance and covenants that was adopted in 1985 does not explicitly incorporate or reference the 1980 protective covenants that contain the five-acre minimum restriction. That's essentially the basis of the appeal. In that statement, the word explicitly does a lot of work. And I will address why I say that here momentarily. I'm not gonna be giving you any new documents, new evidence, but I do want to kind of walk you through, one last time if you can bear it, the chronology, because it is important to really connect the dots. And they do all connect. From 1980, when National Associated Properties, NAP, started this Meadowbrook West subdivision. They created 19 10-acre lots. They recorded an easement for Reynolds Road to provide access to those lots. And I think it was on the same day, in 1980, they recorded protective covenants. And in those protective covenants, there's a restriction for lots not being below five acres. The easement recorded in 1980 had Exhibit A, which was a depiction of the 19 lots and Reynolds Road running through them. And the protective covenants incorporated the same Exhibit A document, that map. In 1983, NAP contracted to buy adjacent property. Adjacent property owned by a couple named Billions, and it's the Smith parcel today, same property. In 1984, NAP added land to Meadowbrook West through amendment to the easement from 1980. And what that amendment to the easement did is it changed the configuration of Reynolds Road so that it touches what was then the Billions parcel, now the Smith parcel. And that's this area you can see right here. If you compare the map from 1980 to the map in 1984, that amendment to the easement, you can see how the road configuration changed. The Billions and NAP did that because they wanted Reynolds Road to provide direct access to what was then the Billions parcel and what NAP had contracted to buy. They were bringing that property into their plan for Meadowbrook West. Then in 1985, NAP again, and about 12 other lot owners of Meadowbrook West, adopted a declaration of road maintenance and covenants. And that is the document that Mr. Braden says does not explicitly reference the 1980 protective covenants. And he is correct about that. The '85 document does not explicitly reference the 1980 protective covenants. But it's still NAP. It's still Reynolds Road. It's still Meadowbrook West, which now has extended Reynolds to what is currently the Smith property. The 1985 document, that declaration, added the association, added management and road maintenance for Reynolds Road, for properties that were part of Meadowbrook West and property that had been added to Meadowbrook West by NAP. And in 1999, NAP contracted, well, they had taken title to what is now the Smith property. And by 1999, NAP is selling that property to Mr. Smith, subject to the modified easement for Reynolds that gives them access from Reynolds Road, and everything else NAP had done up to that point as part of a consistent design, plan, and progression of documents starting in 1980. So this story starts with NAP in 1980, and every step along the way, NAP is involved, and they're making changes to adjust as the property evolved. And it ends with the Smiths buying from NAP the subject property they're now seeking In 2001, when the Smiths finally got title from NAP, they had access from Clementson, which goes through their property, and they also had access from Reynolds, because Reynolds had been extended to touch their land where it had not prior. And in 2001, the Smiths made the sensible, pragmatic choice to build a house there, and they used Reynolds as their access, not Clementson, because they could. Because the Reynolds Road easement through NAP had been extended to the Billions property that the Smiths now own. They could have come off Clementson, but if they're building in the north end of their property, as they did, it's a much shorter driveway to come off Reynolds. So why not? In 2001, after they took title and built their house, the Smiths started paying assessments, started voting in the association, participating in association decisions. And then in 2004, they explicitly joined the association by signing another amendment to that 1985 declaration. And ever since, for the last 24 years, they have participated as voting and paying members of the association. An association created by NAP for Reynolds Road, for Meadowbrook West, and for properties added to the Meadowbrook West project, just like the Billions parcel was added by NAP. So there is a consistent, if you read through the documents, read through them in chronological order, and understand it's NAP acting all the way through, there is a consistent plan, design that is being implemented through these various documents. You cannot see them as standalone documents. They don't make sense as standalone documents. They make sense as amendments of each other, just as the documents allow. For 24 years, the Smiths have received the benefit of being members of the association. And they are not today victims of a small but important restriction in that first set of protective covenants, because they volunteered to be part of this system, this design, this plan that NAP implemented from 1980 through 2001. The Smiths volunteered to become members of the association and to participate, and they don't get to now pick and choose which parts of that consistent, comprehensive plan NAP implemented before they took title. They're trying to say, never mind our conduct, our voting, the checks we wrote, the documents we signed over the last 20 years, 24 years. They're trying to say we're not subject to that one provision we don't like now. There is a thread that runs through all of these documents, unbroken, that connects the 1980 protective covenants and easement to the Smith property today. So when Mr. Braden says the '85 document declaration does not explicitly reference the 1980 protective covenants, he is correct, but his analysis is far too narrow and essentially doesn't take into account why all of these documents exist. What were the circumstances that was driving the adoption of these amendments? It's not an accident that they all exist. There were reasons. And again, if you read through them in chronological order, they all make sense when read together. They're getting to the same place, for the same reasons that NAP started this project in the first place, in 1980. So, the connection is there. I'm not sure if Mr. Braden used that word intentionally, but it's not a requirement that there be the words, the 1980 protective covenants, in the 1985 document. It's not a requirement that there be a reference to the instrument number or the recording date of the 1980 protective covenants for the 1985 declaration to be an amendment of the 1980 protective covenants. That happens all the time. If you look at the 1980 protective covenants, they allow for changes, amendments, as a majority of the lot owners deem to be necessary. And that's what NAP did in 1985, along with a dozen private owners. It's what they did when they brought in the Billions property and amended the easement for Reynolds Road, and it's what happened in 2004, when the Smiths explicitly joined So I hope, if you could, to review those documents, those, that chain that connects the Smith property to the 1980 protective covenants, and go through them one more time. And I think you will find that Mr. Braden, in his conclusion, may have been technically correct, but as a practical matter, incorrect. The documents are a unified set, serving one purpose for one project that the Smiths' property was added to. And that's simple, objective fact. There is another part of Mr. Braden's letter, his last paragraph, where he suggests that we made some kind of strategy decision to not go straight to court and instead start this process. And I have to respond to that because it's inaccurate. The director had made a decision. He'd approved the minor subdivision. We are in an administrative process. You can't run to court attacking an administrative process until you, and you probably know this, until we exhaust our administrative remedies. So it would have been a fool's errand to skip all of this and go straight to court, as much as I would have preferred to do that. Lastly, I have to say, and this is somewhat off-topic, but all of this is unnecessary. All of what we're doing right now is a waste of time and money and effort on everybody's I would encourage, as I said in my brief, the county to seriously consider adopting a rule, adding it to the subdivision process, that simply says, if there is a legal question that pops up as part of a subdivision application, which frankly should be a fairly objective process, set a criteria, a process, an application, a checklist, and you either qualify or you don't. But this happens. There are legal questions that come up, especially when you've got lawyers on all three sides of the request. But it should be a simple, objective, you meet the criteria or you don't kind of process. But if there's a challenge to the legality of an application because of some recorded document and easements, CCNRs, or something like that, the county could pass a rule that just says, if that happens, we will not process the application further. We'll stop the administrative process. You can get off of that bus, you can go see a judge, and you can come back with the answer. And we'd all avoid having administrative appeals of legal questions that should be answered by courts. That's what courts are for, and they're pretty good at it. And if the county doesn't like that option, they could go the other way. They could say, if a legal question pops up from some recorded document that questions the validity of your subdivision application, we will ignore that question and we will proceed to process the application. And then you'll get your decision, yes or no, and then you can go to court and have it resolved. And the county's not part of that lawsuit. It's between the opponents challenging the validity of the subdivision on a basis that's completely outside of the county process. You know, one or the other, a black and white, you know what you're gonna get, and we don't have to go into this legal quagmire in the middle of an administrative process where someone like you has to try to play judge and listen to lawyers argue about things we can't even agree about, let alone the county lawyer or the county commissioners. I mean, please don't take this as an insult, but are you qualified to answer this question?
No. I mean, as a real estate person, I have my own views, and one who's spent 40 years in the world of real estate and laws and title reports and recordings and so forth, so yes, I have an opinion.
Would you rather have a judge do this? Would a judge be a better place for this to be answered?
I'm gonna leave that.
I would refrain from answering that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we'll probably get there anyway, having taken this detour, very time-consuming and expensive for all concerned. I'm just suggesting to the county, there's a solution that can avoid all this. I'm just suggesting to the county, there's a solution that can avoid all this. Somebody's going to hate it. Half of every person who's interested in any subdivision's going to be annoyed by that rule, whichever way it goes. But we've got that already, so we're not losing any ground. We're saving a lot of time and a lot of resources. So I think we can do better. I said lastly, but lawyers make promises all the time they don't keep. The last thing, and I mean it this time, I want to address is the estoppel arguments that are covered in my brief, so I'm not going to go through them again. But that's a backup plan. That's the safety net if we can't convince you that Mr. Braden's initial conclusion was wrong. So I want to focus on what I spent my time on. The 1985 declaration amends and incorporates the 1980 protective covenants that are at issue today. That's our position, and it's well-supported by that chain of documents that directly connect NAP in 1980 to the Smiths in 2001. Failing that, they should not, and I believe will not be allowed, to reverse their position for the last 24 years and say to a judge, we were fine with all of that for 24 years, but now we don't like this little part, so we want out. Ignore what we've done for the last 24 years, the money we've spent, the votes we've made, participation we've had, and let us change our position when it's convenient. That's the estoppel argument. It's common sense, and I think you can see the legal support for it in my briefing. Unless you have questions.
Not right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blake.
Before I give the county's response, I believe we were going to stand for or hear any testimony in support of the appellant. And I'll let Joan take over from there.
Connie Krueger, you wish to speak?
In support of the appellant.
Oh, backwards again. I was looking for colors. Okay, we have Frank Smith, who is opposed and may wish to speak. Is he here? No. Jeffrey Knapp, opposed and does not wish to speak.
I don't want to speak, but I meant the reverse. I was supporting the appeal.
Okay. All right.
In support of the appeal?
In support of the appeal? That's the, in favors, right?
I think I marked the inverse of what I intended.
Okay. So Don Mosher is in favor and may wish to speak.
I don't care to speak right now.
Okay. Doug Sellers is in favor and wishes to speak.
All I can say is, walks like a duck.
I have to have you, if you want to say something, name and address, and then you can say it.
Douglas Sellers, 1935 Reynolds Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I occupy the property directly north of the issue property, and all I want to say is, you know, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Plain and simple. Thank you.
Bob Haynes, in favor, does not wish to speak. James Schweitzer, in favor, does not wish to speak. Jeffrey Knapp, in favor, does not wish to speak. Okay. That's what I have.
All right, so I will proceed with my presentation, giving a brief overview. A lot of this we've already heard from Scott Porman, the representative of the appellant. But in summary, the appellant, Don Mosher, believes that the covenants are applicable to the subject property, which restricts the lot size to any parcel encumbered by the covenants to be of five acres in minimum. After reviewing the documents, staff, back up. In reviewing the documents, the Smiths have owned the parcel since 2001 and did sign the owner's resolution and amended declaration of road maintenance. This document does relate back to the 1985 road maintenance and covenants for Meadow West, so it is easily to be inferred that what the Smith signs does relate back to the road maintenance, the original road maintenance agreement. Upon further review, though, it does not, the road, I'm sorry, upon further review, the 2004 amended declaration does not relate back to the protective covenants, which were referenced in record 1980, 1983. And the protective covenants covers a very specific area of land. On this first page of the document, which has been illustrated here in the recorded document, that recorded document has been overlaid with aerial imagery, as you can see in the blue. The Smith parcel is outside of these covenant boundary in orange. So after further analysis, staff believes no document has been produced that would constitute evidence that the Smiths ever agreed to the terms of the covenants and thus not bound to them. Upon the last hearing on April 17th, Scott Porman, the lead representative of the appellant, did provide additional analysis, as you just heard, stating that he believes that the correlation of all the documents combined do prohibit the subdivision from moving forward as they're in conflict with the CCNRs. Pat Braden, as referenced by the appellant's representative, is the county's civil attorney. Upon his review, the original, he believes the original road declaration of road maintenance and covenants neither explicitly incorporated nor even referenced the protective covenants, which have the restriction of the five acres. So despite the Smiths' participation in the road maintenance agreement, the evidence in the record indicates that the protective covenants are not applicable to the Smith property. As such, staff recommends that the appeal of this decision be denied and that the decision of the director to approve the minor subdivision be affirmed. And I stand for any questions.
I have none. Thanks.
At this time, we'll hear support and testimony in opposition of the appeal.
I was the only, it was Eric Smith.
Sorry.
But I don't need to speak.
You're sure?
Unless you have questions for me, I'm out.
Actually, I do have a question for you.
Eric Smith, 2835 South Reynolds Road.
Just curious, when you acquired the property, did you have thoughts of subdividing?
I bought 20 acres in the beginning, and so I've had a variety of thoughts, yeah. But I've been planning on subdividing before the petition came up to the county. And I put that in my written materials. That's why I'd been applying for other pond permits to develop those properties. So, yeah, it's been a thought of mine for a long time. As I put in my written materials, I didn't even know about the five acre restriction until that petition came forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did we have anybody? One?
For the city. Yeah. Me and Ray Wall, and then I ended up moving. So what's the point? Maybe I shouldn't even.
Want to move?
Yes, maybe.
Is there anybody that would like to speak?
I just want, I'm moving then, and here I am. So I'm saying anything can go. So I'm just like, if they let me speak, I'll speak, and if not, I'm going to let it go.
Ready for you to speak?
Here's the thing. I sent a text to seven of my neighbors about this meeting.
I'm not getting them to respond. It sounds like they've got them on speakerphone. Okay. And Connie, did you wish to speak? No? All right.
Gentlemen, try to through your microphone, asking if the person on the phone wants to speak.
Okay. We understand there is someone on the phone line that might wish to speak on this matter. If they could unmute themselves and reduce their background noise, we'd love to hear what you have to say.
We're not picking you up.
The video was delayed by two, three, four seconds. And the other guy.
Okay. I think we've given enough opportunity. All right. Anything else?
If that's it for the county's case in chief, then we would move to the appellant's rebuttal.
I don't have any rebuttal unless you have questions. There wasn't a lot to rebut.
I don't think I have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then that concludes our hearing this evening on case number APP24-0001. Thank you. And now we will hear case number MSP24-0003.
Good evening. I don't know if we can get started.
I think you're good.
All right. Good evening. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. I am here to present a preliminary major subdivision application on behalf of Lakeland, on behalf of the county for consideration of a eight-lot subdivision proposed by Lakeland Lanning's LLC. This is a bit of a unique set of circumstances. As you may recall, and you have read the amended staff report, this matter came before you earlier this year, specifically on February 20th. At that hearing, staff presented the case as well as the applicant, and then you took public testimony and subsequently recommended denial of their request. In light of your recommendation, the applicant decided to conduct some more homework to see if they could get additional information from agencies to be able to perhaps submit more information to receive a favorable recommendation from the hearing body. So before I get into the specifics of what transpired after the first hearing, I'd like to recap the facts of the case for the public so that in case there are any concerns or any issues that were brought up or have not been brought up at this time, there's a better sense of what their request is before you this evening. So the subject property consists of 20 acres. It is located off of English Point Road near Hayden Lake. The property is fairly flat. A large portion of it is just a field, but there is a portion of the property on a north end that is forested. The current zoning classification for the subject property is restricted residential, and the comprehensive plan designation is transitional. The property is also located within the Hayden Lake area of city impact. It's important to note that while the restricted residential zone has a minimum lot size of 8,250 square feet pursuant to the area of city impact for city of Hayden Lake, the minimum density shall be one dwelling unit per acre. It doesn't mean that the minimum lot size should be one acre. It just implies that there shall be no more than one residence per acre. And I think it's important to know that, that some folks, as well as city officials, have stated that some of the lots do not meet the minimum lot size. However, that's not the case. Some of the lots are less than an acre in size, but that's because of some of the utility tracts that are being dedicated. But the overall density, as proposed today, is meeting that requirement of eight residential lots on 20 acres. Seven of them are small to be built on immediately, and the eighth tract or the eighth parcel, that's the remainder, will subsequently be subdivided at such point when North Cootney Water District will lift its moratorium and be able to provide domestic water supply. So the proposal here, this is facing north, to your left is facing north, this is English Point Road, you have Patty Drive that is existing road south of English Point Road that will be extended north, and it will dead-end in a cul-de-sac here. The applicant is proposing a couple of utility tracts as well as seven small lots and then the remainder parcel, as I have explained. The domestic water supply at this point is proposed to be via an existing shared well with a distribution line providing water to each individual lot, and then each lot will be required to have a reservoir on demand in order to meet the required flow rate requirements of minimum of five gallons per minute flow for a period of four hours. F-flowing discharge was originally proposed and still is the case to be via Hayden Lake Sewer District. So this is a new slide that I'd like to present to you tonight for you as well as the public, just show how the proposed subdivision will be laid out and just to compare the proposed lots with the surrounding development in the area. I'd like to note that a majority of not all the lots are actually larger in size than the surrounding development to the north, which is Rimrock Meadows, as well as Fox Hollow to the northwest. There are a number of plats, I don't know the names of them, but there are a number of plats south of English Point Road that have lots of similar size or smaller. So from a compatibility standpoint, we don't really see there being any issue, and there were a lot of concerns from the public through the public comment period that addressed the compatibility issue and development in this area. So these are a couple of photos of the property. There's no existing development outside. It's vacant. So through the initial public agency comment period, we received responses from all the agencies, and everyone was on board. I'd like to also remind you that while water for domestic use will be provided via an existing shared well, fire suppression, because of the fire code, where you have, when you have lots that are less than five acres in size, a developer is, must provide fire hydrants for fire suppression needs. Fire suppression will be provided by North Cootney Water, even though they currently have a moratorium for domestic water supply. And they did provide an explanation why they're able to do so at this time. However, domestic water supply will only be provided by North Cootney after they lift their moratorium. The main issue that was brought The main issue that was brought to light, and their initial recommendation for denial was stemming from the comments submitted by the Hayden Lake Sewer District. And in their will serve letter, which they have issued very similar letters throughout this area for subdivisions that I have mentioned, Rimrock Meadows, as well as Fox Hollow, they have the will and capacity, if you will, to serve the property, but they cannot guarantee the applicant's right to obtain sewer service, which is expressly conditioned on there being the capacity at the time of development. They do not allow prepayment for those connections to be secured prematurely or before development. And staff has expressed that concern to the applicant, as well as you, at the previous hearing. And one of the comments that the applicant made at the time is that they were trying to have the district, the sewer district amend their will serve letter or perhaps change their regulations in order to allow prepayment. That did not happen at the time of the February twentieth hearing. So based on the fact that we could not have a guarantee as required per code to have sewer connections available at the time of preliminary approval, there's at least six findings, I'm sorry, five findings that could not be met for a recommendation of approval on behalf of staff, as well as you. I'm not going to read through them, but basically it implies that their lots cannot be created of reasonable utility and livability due to lack of services for those lots. With that in mind, you submitted a recommendation of denial in March of this year, approximately two weeks after the initial hearing. So what did the applicant do? They went back to Hayden Lake Sewer District, and they proceeded to make a formal request for the sewer district to amend their ordinance in order to allow prepayment. And unfortunately, the district declined. They said, "No, we're not going to amend our regulations. You cannot prepay for those sewer connections." So what did the applicant do? They decided to move forward with an alternative and seek the approval of Health District to have a standard subsurface septic system with a drain field available on each lot. And in April of this year, they actually, or I'm sorry, in May of this year, they were able to get a preliminary approval subject to pretreatment due to high water table. So the alternative method basically was in lieu of not being able to get a, a connection secured for each of the lots through prepayment. One of the things that I didn't want to forget to state is your initial recommendation for denial was based on two key points. A, the fact that the applicant could not get sewer connections secured to each lot. And the second one, which was not brought up by the, by staff, was the fact that you believe that having the applicant convert their domestic water supply connection from shared well to North Cootney Water, once it lifts its moratorium, would be a unreasonable burden from a financial standpoint in having the HOA monitor, monitor and impose having all those homes being connected to North Cootney Water District. But I think your primary concern was the financial aspect of having to connect to a different source. So during the second public comment period that we initiated, we did receive more comments that were in line with the original comments in opposition of the request. And they were basically the fact that there's a strain on water supply, that there would be additional traffic, the fact that there would be displacement of wildlife. So the comments were very similar, if not identical. I did want to point out that the applicant approached staff, and they said, "What would be the best course of action for us to move forward with the latest information from Panhandle Health District? Having an alternative method of sewer treatment available to meet the required findings that are listed here on the screen." So we, as a department, felt that they had two options. One, to move forward with a recommendation of denial in front of the board, or come back to you with new information to perhaps change your position and, and submit a favorable recommendation. Historically, and based on my experience and in, in discussion with Director Callahan and Planning Manager Ben Tarbott, and we felt that the most appropriate course of action should be to come back to you. Because it's, we find that it's more difficult to convince or provide a compelling argument to the board once you have a, a recommendation of denial. Perhaps having new information come back to you and then having a recommendation of approval stood a better chance of having the board approve the project. So the applicant took staff's advice, and they requested that we conduct a second public hearing. And that's why we're here before you tonight. So based on the latest information, I'd like to kind of go through some of the key points with regards to the two issues that you brought up in your recommendation for denial. We find that even though the sewer district did not amend their regulation and decline to take prepayment, the alternative option to connect or have individual septic and drain field does meet the code requirements. And therefore, we do not find that the sewer issue is longer, is, is any longer problematic for the applicant to address at the time of final plat application. So we find that that can, is easily resolved with an alternative option. I don't believe the applicant will go that route, but it meets the code. With the second option, and I think that perhaps may require the applicant to elaborate on that more, we, as a department, do not find that there is unreasonable burden on the applicant, excuse me, on the applicant, on the future homeowners to connect to North Cootney Water. Here's why. First of all, the applicants will, or the future homeowners will already have a connection to a shared well that's already been pre-drilled, and the distribution lines will be constructed by the developer. So that, that cost will not be incurred by the future homeowners. They will only be responsible for having the cisterns on the parcel. Moreover, because the applicant has to construct the water main for fire suppression needs, that same line will actually serve water for domestic use. And the applicants will have those tap lines already installed for the applicants to switch over. So there is going to be a minimal cost involved in switching over to North Cootney Water. So for that reason, we respectfully disagree with your initial recommendation that there is going to be a financial burden on, on the applicants. If you have any concerns or questions about the actual cost, that perhaps should be brought directly as a question to the applicant rather than staff. But we, we don't find there being an issue with, you know, the unreasonable financial burden at this time. I don't think I have anything else to add at this point unless you have questions for me.
I don't have anything at this point. Eric?
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
All right. Vlad, did you receive our, there it is. All right. I'm going to just breeze through, as Vlad's given a pretty good overview. You've heard it before, so I'm going to get to the water, the water issue and provide some more detail. Thought just to reinforce, this intended to be a, a private road with a, with a gate, built to highway district standards. Developer has entered into a road development agreement with Lakes Highway District. It's kind of their typical ask, which is eighty-two hundred dollars per lot, which is supposed to be held by them in a fund for future improvements to English Point Road. Okay. Potable water, yes. The project is within the North Cootney Water and Sewer District Service Area. They are under a growth moratorium due to the technical reasons, our inability to meet maximum day demands with their largest well offline and inability to maintain a minimum forty PSI pressure to current customers during peak hour demand. They are in the process of implementing improvements to get rid of that moratorium and accept new customers. Moratorium cannot be lifted until the system is fully compliant with DEQ's Public Water System rules. So here's, our proposal is all parcels will be required to connect to North Cootney at the time the moratorium is lifted. At this time, there will be no new connections added to the system. We're not allowed to do that, so we won't be drawing any water and affecting the system at this time. The only time that might happen is if there were, was a fire that was utilizing one of our proposed fire hydrants. So we are proposing a shared well for domestic and the use of North Cootney's system for fire flow. Shared well was drilled in April last year and test pumped last June. The test pumping showed a capacity of eighteen gallons per minute. If you do the math, that's thirty-two hundred forty gallons per day per home, which is a little more than twice the minimum standard in code. We are recommending two thousand gallons cisterns be installed on each lot to mitigate periods of high demand. And kind of our, our new twist here is that the, we're going to intend for that shared well and that shared system to stay in use and provide water for irrigation after the homes connect to North Cootney for domestic water. So that will minimize impacts to North Cootney's system. The vast majority of water that is used during, during the summer months, during the peak months, is used for irrigation, not domestic. So that's something that will reduce the strain on the system and will also decrease the water bills for the, the potential new customers. So this diagram on the right is what we're in. This is our, our proposal for how to set this up. How are we going to set up these water connections and make it easy for the switch over to happen when the moratorium's lifted? So the line in, the features in red there are what's, that's the shared well system that we'd be putting in at the outset. There's a cistern there, and then it goes into the house to connect to the house plumbing. The blue line is the big one at the bottom there. That's the eight-inch water main. We are proposing to install the service line all the way into the house. We're installing everything except for this little connection right here, which would happen at the time of a switch over. So once they're able to connect to North Cootney, the meter goes in the box here. This connection happens in the mechanical area of the home. And then we're going to plug the connection from the, from the cistern and the shared well system so that it's, it's not intermingling with North Cootney's system. But the, but that system will still be there, and it will still be available to serve the irrigation systems, which are typically tapped right outside the foundation. So that's kind of the, the physical part of that. So the other part is, well, who's going to pay for it and when? And is it going to be a surprise sort of thing? So the, the idea we've got and that we're proposing is that when, when somebody buys one of these lots and decides to build a home, they're going to pay into a reserve account with the Homeowners Association, the anticipated amount of the cap fee that the, that will have to be paid to North Cootney, and some additional funds to cover this plumbing right here. The total cost of that to the, to the future homeowner is fif, about fifteen thousand dollars for the cistern and the booster pump setup, and approximately eighteen thousand dollars to be held in that reserve account to be managed by the HOA. Some of that is approximately thirty-three thousand per residence. And our basis for comparison is, think of another subdivision on the prairie or anywhere else that's proposed with individual wells. We contacted Horstley Drilling and United Crown Pump and Drilling, and the estimated costs we arrived upon were thirty-two thousand dollars for the well drilling and twenty-five thousand dollars for the individual pump system. So we feel like it, that's, we're trying to provide that to illustrate that there's no unusual cost burden, and in fact, maybe even a cost savings on, on the individual lot. Impacts to existing North Cootney Water System customers. Well, there will, there will be no water drawn from the, from the system again unless there's a fire. However, we will, we're adding this, this loop here, these yellow, these yellow lines here are their, their existing, that's their existing water system. So you can see just from a kind of a common sense, practical standpoint, this provides some nice, nice redundancy in looping to their system. The benefits, as we bulleted right here, increased distribution system capacity, which will help pressure issues to the Ironwood on Hayden and Falls at Hayden Lake subdivisions. Expected to increase fire flow to English Point and Point Hayden areas by two hundred fifty gallons per minute based on hydraulic modeling. Increases water circulation in the southeast portion of the system, which should improve water quality issues south of English Point Road. And my other point, increases system reliability by adding redundant flow pass. So all of this at no cost to the Water District or its existing customers. This next slide is an excerpt from North Cootney's hydraulic model. This is the current configuration right here, and we can see that all of these nodes here in red are in the eight hundred to eight hundred fifty gallon per minute range for fire flow. That'd be considered slightly substandard. With this loop added in and added into the model, you can see all these numbers are in four digits. So that's what we were talking about before. That's that two hundred fifty gallon per minute boost. We did consider using, constructing this system so it could serve fire flow. But we believe we made the best choice possible for our project and the public as far as the water system goes, given the benefits to North Cootney's system. And we felt like in the long term, it's better for, better for these homeowners to be on an established system rather than to create a new, small system. Sanitary sewer. Vlad described it. I bet Vlad did a pretty good job describing that. The, really the only potential limitation to serving sewer to this, to this property is that the treatment plant. That's Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. They stated to us, there's currently capacity for four hundred fifty new connections. They have, they do have a sizable service area, and they, they add about two hundred new connections per year. But they're in the process of increasing their capacity by an additional two thousand connections by the end of next year. So we don't have any reason to believe that this project won't So we don't have any reason to believe that this project won't be utilizing Hayden Lake Sewer. That's what we want it to do. This is more kind of Panhandle Health stuff that's available as a backup should some unforeseen circumstance come up, but again, we don't intend to use that. That's pretty much the same as Vlad's slide there. Any questions?
No, just thank you. I think this second round summary has answered questions that needed to be answered.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Derek Huff may wish to speak. No? Scott Campbell is opposed, wishes to speak.
Three minutes is kind of tough, but I'll do what I can.
Okay.
Scott Campbell, four three six zero East Burchell, Hayden, Idaho. We are opposed to the application. We built our home on English Point twenty-five years ago. We were not blind to the fact that growth and development was inevitable. However, we put our trust in organizations like Cootney County and Panhandle Health to protect our community and the environment to ensure that developers who prioritize profit over sound development don't happen. Water in Cootney County remains an ongoing concern. Our aqueduct, our aquifer is the only support, supply of drinking water for most of Spokane and Cootney County. Substantial growth over these past few years has put a profound effect on our aquifer. Today, our area, as you know, is under a water moratorium for new builds as well as recently imposed watering restrictions for all existing residents. The developer Lakeland Landing has circumvented this moratorium by drilling a well, yet that well comes from the same aquifer. In the case of the shared well, the water volume is so low, as they stated, each home will have to have a two thousand gallon cistern installed, as well as future homeowners will be required or be restricted on the type of landscape they're allowed to have around their home. You know, Cootney County needs to ask the question, is this developer imposing an unreasonable burden on future owners, especially if this shared well fails? Sewer connections, another issue. The Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board controls the local treatment plant, not Hayden Lake Sewer District. That is why the will serve letters are not ever guaranteed. As Eric just stated, as of this week, they have fewer than five hundred, actually it's down to four fifty. As an alternative, they reached out to Panhandle Health requesting approval for septic on this area. Panhandle Health has indicated that septic would be acceptable based on some core samples that were provided. However, these core samples were taken from limited depths and they don't really represent the true geological makeup of our area. Retired geologist, Dr. James Pearl, who's lived on Hayden or English Point for more than twenty-five years, recently published an article outlining the concerns for growing potential contamination of Hayden Lake if in fact, septic was to be placed on this development. So again, we ask Cootney County, we need you to ask the question, is this developer imposing an unreasonable burden for future owners, existing homeowners and even our environment, especially if there's a septic leak? So in closing, we just want to say that we don't believe this development is proper for our area today. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Schumacher, Shoemaker, opposed, wishes to speak.
My name is Sandra Shoemaker. I live at four one seven four East English Point Road, directly across the street from the proposed development. I would like to read, as Mr. Campbell referenced, an article placed in the Coeur d'Alene Press on seven twenty-five twenty-five. He is a, has a PhD in geology and is, I think, qualified to comment. And if I could just read his brief statement that was published. On August seventh at six PM, Cootney County Leadership will consider if popular estates at English Point should be approved. The decision could impact all of North Idaho who enjoy swimming at Honeysuckle Beach, fishing the lake for an Idaho record pike or boating with family. Leaders without understanding the regional geology of the twenty acre, eight residential lots project may allow septic tanks. Any leakage will allow sewage to drain down a thin veneer of soil and decomposing basalt fragments to the upper surface of the Columbia River basalt flows. These basals will act as a subterranean stream surface to channel contaminated waters into nearby Hayden Lake. And without understanding the belt supergroup formations of mostly impervious mudstones which underlie the basalt flows, homes will attempt to share, including cisterns, six to ten gallons of water per minute from a well about forty, four hundred feet in depth. Lacking infrastructure for the great influx of new people creates another Cootney County problem. Cootney County Leadership, please consider risks to Hayden Lake waters and reject this poorly planned project. And I of course concur with his statements. I think the consideration of potential health risks, safety and the general welfare of the general, of the area should, contamination should occur is a significant concern. And I don't think there is any way to test, or if there is, maybe that needs to be disclosed, if there is any way to test, if there is contamination seepage into the underlying basalt structure fragments that would reach Hayden Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Shoemaker is opposed and wishes to speak.
Tom Shoemaker, the other half of the lady that just spoke a couple of minutes ago. Live at forty-one seventy-four East English Point Road. And I'd like to bring up an issue that hasn't been discussed at all. I have two major positions that need to be thought through. Anyway, this system from the common well with the pumps and the distribution system and the valves and everything it takes to get water from the well to each house, that's a sophisticated systems. Systems don't always work. In fact, systems over the course of time, most, mostly fail at times. Pump needs new, pump need new parts, valve stick, et cetera, et cetera. Any of those can cause disruption of the water flow to each of those homes. Water is critical. We have to have water to live. If there's pump parts that can't be obtained for a couple of days or so, that main pump or any of the pumps can be down for days. People may literally run out of water. And the, I see the new two thousand gallon capacity for the sisters, the cisterns, last time it was twenty-five hundred. So the second part of it is the human part. Water usage in the US, an average per person is a hundred, is eighty to a hundred gallons per person per day. So if you've got four people in a house, you could use four hundred gallons a day. In six days, that's twenty-four hundred gallons of water. That system, that cistern will go dry potentially every week and be, need to be refilled for every single home on the, on the street. Now, if two or three families out of the seven or eight all get down to a low level or are trying to draw water concurrently, I don't know how this system will work. Some may be put in line and delayed, they may not get water for hours, maybe overnight or whatever. But anyway, it's inevitable that numerous families will need water drawn simultaneously. I don't know if the system accommodates that. Maybe our friends can tell us if it does or doesn't. Anyway, if people have to wait for water and they don't have water, they can't, they can't prepare food, they can't take a shower, they can't, they can't even flush their toilets, okay? Those are very serious issues to people. And if this happens on, this is a five-year period, I guess, until North Cootney water supply. If that happens repetitively for a number of people, and it may, it may not, but it very well may, people get very angry. When they get angry enough and there's more problems incurred, they sue. That's just what this environment in this country is. They will sue the county, they will sue the developer, they will sue the builder. And I think that should be seriously considered before we go any further. Have attorneys from the county met with attorneys from Lakeland Capital considering lawsuits for interruptions of service of water? Not you, drop the service, interruptions of water available to the homes.
Your timer went off and I think you said you had two issues. So can you quickly state what your other issue is?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a bit hard to hear.
Oh, that was your timer for three minutes and I think you mentioned that you had two issues. So can you quickly state what your second issue is?
The first issue is the pumping in the distribution system. The second is usage and the refill of the cisterns at the seven or eight additional homes being simultaneously needing to be refilled.
Okay, got it.
And if people get interrupted significantly over the course of time, people get angry and they, in this country, they sue. They sue whoever they can. They sue the commission here.
Okay.
So I think lawsuits should be a consideration with this system. They have to draw from this neighborhood well and support all seven or eight of the homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody on the phone? Yes, we do. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Why can't they get through? Hello?
Hello, we're hearing you. Name and address for the record.
Karen Osterlund.
Okay.
Forty-three fifty-three East Sorrel Ave. Hello?
Hello, go ahead with your testimony, please.
Okay. I am opposed to this development for all the reasons that the prior two neighbors had mentioned. Water, we, we are already on water restrictions from North Cootney. We understand that they're not going to be using North Cootney water at this time. However, we know that them drilling the wells puts stress on our water tables, it lowers the water tables, it pulls from our, the aquifers that, that we use. And the, the septic system is of a concern. I think we need to look further into professionals like the geologist, the PhD geologist who has major concerns about possible septic leakage and the effect that that would have on our lake, on our tourist industry, on the current neighbor's property values if we have a polluted lake. Another issue is who, who would test the water of these new homeowners in this subdivision? Who's going to check for the quality of that, of that water? And, and who's going to periodically inspect the septic system to make sure that it, there isn't any leakage on that? Who's in charge of that and who's going to do it and who's gonna, who's gonna pay for it? So again, I say that things are moving far too quickly and we need a lot more professionals who don't stand to have any economic gain from this project. And we need to seek out their professionals' opinions and those need to be considered very heavily. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. Then we'll hear rebuttal.
A lot of doom and gloom and doomsday talk for what's an eight lot subdivision. Regarding concerns to aquifer capacity, North Cootney's wells are not in the same aquifer as this well. North Cootney's wells are on the Rathdrum Prairie aquifer. Their moratorium is not due to source capacity, it's due to pumping capacity. So some clarification there. There's nothing unusual about these septic systems that very likely will not go in. The, the test pits were the normal depth of the test pits taken by Panhandle Health. There's pre-treatment recommended and I believe six of, eight of these lots show, so in the rare instance that there is a overflow or an issue with the septic system, you're dealing with pretreated effluent rather than raw effluent. And generally, those, those types of issues are surface overflows and not subsurface overflows. I take offense to the, the statement that this is a poorly planned system. There's been a lot of time and effort by a talented group of engineers and developers to set this up for success. The well system, I would not call it overly sophisticated. You know, there's, there's a well, there's a couple of control panels, there's some valves, there's some pipe. It's nothing unusual. Again, these are all over the county. There's several companies set up to maintain these types of systems. And that is a benefit of that's two thousand gallon cisterns in the event of a, of a malfunction or something that needs maintenance in the system, that two thousand gallons will be there for the, for the homeowners to, you know, to ride through until the system is back online. And generally, if you know your system has an issue, you can manage your water use for those days until it gets on and really stretch out how long you can make it. But again, it's nothing unusual. And I believe that's all I have.
Anything else? Yes, Vlad?
Just a general comment I would like to make. It's not related to this project, but a general comment in reference to the questions that were posed by a gal on the phone and folks that testified before you tonight. In general, there, there are different types of water systems that can be contemplated to provide water service pursuant to the Cootney County Land Use and Development Code. The first one is an individual well. The second option is of course, doing a shared well between two and nine lots. Anything beyond nine lots with one single source of water supply is considered to be a a public water system, whether it's maintained by a public water system such as a water district or privately maintained. It still has to meet state law regulations under DEQ for a public water drinking system. So when someone submits an application to our department, whether it's a minor or major subdivision, we automatically review the application. And if you have a well that's going to provide water to nine or fewer lots, it only goes out to review to Idaho Department of Water Resources for water right assessment. If you have a project that produces or will provide water with a well that will be developed as a private or a public water system to more than nine lots, we automatically solicit comments from the Department of Environmental Quality. Their water division analyzes the design and capacity and construction phase of the application, and we do not issue a final plat approval until the requirements of DEQ have been met in conjunction with the water right being issued by Idaho Department of Water Resources. The also question was posed, how is the water quality being tested? When it comes to a shared well of up to nine lots, there, I don't believe there is anything from state agencies that requires water quality review. It only comes up after you meet the threshold for a public water system. So anything beyond nine lots or a system, I believe, that serves more than 25 individuals, that's when the threshold for water quality assessment is required by DEQ. In this case, what the applicant is proposing falls under the radar. Therefore, the department did not find the need to have that assessment be completed by DEQ. Wanted to put that into the record.
Okay. Thank you, Vlad. Okay. Nothing else? Then we have concluded our hearing this evening on case number MSP 24-0003. Thank you.